Hi, my name is Mario Guerra and I am the two-time former mayor of the great city of Downey. And I'm here with my co-host Eric Pierce, the editor of the Downey Patriot. And you're here listening, watching, talking Downey with Mario.
And Eric.
So, welcome back folks. And there it's, it's, uh, we try to recap these shows like a couple of days after a council meeting. To big current events and let everyone know what's going on. And how are you doing Eric?
I'm doing great. You know, as of recording this, we're three weeks away from election day.
Yeah.
And I don't know about you, but I can't wait till the election is over. Um, I get, you know, I, I like election season, but I can't wait till it's over. The commercials, all the, the politics of it. I just can't wait till it's over.
Yeah, because by now, if you haven't made up your mind, you know, and which way to go, it's like.
How do you not know how you're gonna go?
Yeah, especially on these TV commercials there, you know, the, the 27 and 26, it's, you know, the poor Indian tribes competing against each other and all these things. And some of the stuff they're, they're saying is just not true.
It seems like every election, we have some sort of proposition that's going to end homelessness. You know, fun, you know, a final end to homelessness. It never happened. We're just, it just, you know, it gets so much nervous.
Eric, there's some of the LA County ones especially, and some of these other bonds, they say the same thing every time. And you're right. I mean, and it's so, we knew we passed one a couple of years ago, right? In LA County, oh, it's gonna end it.
Right.
Yeah, this is, yeah, big time money. Everybody's gonna pay for this, but this is a, gonna happen. And then we find out there's barely any of them that have been built. And the ones that have been built, there's $700,000 per unit. It's like, come on!
And you know what? The people, I still think people are very generous.
Yeah.
And people want to end homelessness. People are tired of people, of seeing people on the streets. We have empathy. We want to solve it. But we're just throwing money at it and it's being mismanaged. It doesn't make any kind of sense.
Eric, you and I, uh, we're here in downtown Downey. We're part of this, uh, community and downtown improvement association and so forth. Eric, there's this homeless man that's there outside. He was just there this morning. He's there every single day, goes sits over there in the mayor's corner. And there, everybody, you know, walks by or gets away and the families on it. It's disruptive. Now, we're human beings, you and I, and, and we care. Obviously, he's got some mental issues, uh, and there's a lot of other issues. What do we do about that? Because every business has complained to me, okay? I mean, you, you know, we can't just kick them out. And, you know, I don't have any authority, but it's just, it's disrupting a lot of other people's business. And people wanting to come into downtown because he's front and center. But yet you've got the human part and then you have the common sense part. What do we do about that?
I don't know the answer. Yeah, I think we're, we're grappling just like every other city. I don't know.
And that's just one. That's literally just one. Now, if he put up a tent, you know, then you can have a, an ordinance thing or something, right?
Right.
But it's just him there every day. And the police have come out several times.
Yeah, you know, and this is one of the issues that came up at the candidates forum a couple of weeks ago. And I didn't want you, I didn't want to talk about that with you, uh, Mario, cause you know, we hosted the, the city council candidates forum at the Barbary Center. It was a great turnout, by the way. A lot of people, we filled the room. Uh, thank you for, for watching. I know that the live stream audio was kind of bad. Uh, but we do have, uh, we recorded it. It's right now on the Talking Downey YouTube page. So if you want to check it out, check it out. Um, what is it? Was like about an hour and a half there around there?
Yeah, but you can fast forward to see the candidates when they're speaking on there, you know? And especially the close-ups of you and me, you know, those are worth watching an hour and a half for.
Sure, sure. No, but you know, so I, I want to get your take on, on, on what happened. We had a, I went back and I watched it. Because you know, when we're moderating it, I wasn't really listening so much for their answers. I was too focused on the time restraints and you know, the, the back and forth. Um, what were your thoughts on the forum overall, generally speaking?
Well, first of all, I'm so glad we did it. And we want to thank the Downey Chamber of Commerce and Jennifer Decay and the Downey Patriot for co-sponsoring along with Talking Downey. We need to continue to do this, um, the future, because the one thing is, I think the residents got to see, there's a big difference in everybody's answers. And there's a big difference in who they are, even if some of them came across okay, you know? Um, but the best part is, there's clear-cut choices and then there's not, you know? Um, we asked them all kinds of questions. We got them on the record. We wanted to find out, you know, the big issues and topics. And it's not really a big issue here, but that's the, some people are trying to make it about rent control and the Ojos Locals and all these other things. So we got some definitive answers. I think you and I did as good as we could to get them, is that a yes or no afterward? But we asked them their positions, what makes them the best. I have that list here. Uh, I was able to ask on there. I know you weren't quite sure about the being arrested part, but I asked if they've been arrested, uh, in or convicted of a misdemeanor or felony. Uh, and one of the candidates was very honest that he had a DUI in his past and he explained it away in his U. And I think that's what you, you know, that's what you want.
Yeah, what we want is, I, you know, obviously being arrested doesn't automatically disqualify you from running for office. But what we're seeing is people want to be aware of your history and people have a right to know.
Right. And we asked then, we asked specific questions. Uh, I'm gonna tell you, you want to go some of the tough questions?
Yeah.
The tough questions, the ones that were directed. And Eric and I talked about these questions before and we were very comfortable about it. So, so, uh, to Anthony Felix, we asked him in a social media post, he claimed that he was physically assaulted while campaigning and had guns brandished at him. And the question was, why did you not report this to the Downey police?
So he, in, in his answer, he said that they were not brandished at him. I guess they were just, you know, I guess holding, holding the weapons. Um, and so that's the reason why he didn't call. But you know, if that's the case.
Physical assault.
Right, you know, I thought his, I, I don't know. I, I feel like if that's the case, his social media post was misleading. Because he made it sound like he was really physically attacked and he, and he was threatened with, two times with, with weapons. I was skeptical from the start and I think a lot of people were.
Of course, this is a little bit of, you know, feel, and he'd feel sorry for me kind of thing. And I was like, I don't know. I only got a good answer. Um, then for Art Martoya, he was asked, uh, you voted for the controversial Ojos Locals on Firestone Boulevard. Do you believe Downey should have decency standards for new restaurants opening up the business?
Right. And, and, and you know, his answer was, you know, he, he voted on it based on the city's guidelines at the time. And he felt that he couldn't vote just because he doesn't want that type of restaurant in Downey. He voted based on the, the mic, on the live music permits and that kind of thing. That was his answer.
So, and then, and then he was asked that the, he was a commissioner by Catherine Alvarez. He was a planning commissioner and now he's a public works commissioner on there. You know, is there, do you have any regrets or, you know, trepidations about being associated with her? And his answer was.
This is very good. I thought he gave a really good answer. Art's answer was, you know, he was, um, approved twice by the entire city council 5-0. And I thought that was a very smart answer. What do you think?
It was a very smart answer. And you know, but tweaky on, on, on what it is. What happens is, and cause I have experience with that. So each council person, uh, makes recommend, excuse me, appoints somebody. Then it has to go on the consent agenda for the rest of the council. Now, unless there's something bad on that person, which on one of them earlier for, for Ms. Alvarez, there was, I guess pornographic executive and so forth. So unless there's something bad on there, the council votes unanimously on there. Because, you know, I don't want you voting against my guys or my ladies, you know, my commissioners lady, uh, future. So that's kind of. So, but that was a really smart answer in his part. It's factually correct, but it was still appointed by her. So good for him. You know, that was a, that was a political answer.
Uh, you know, Art and Hector, um, went back and forth a little bit. You know, it wasn't meant to be a debate, but it was, I think, a healthy debate. I actually kind of, kind of enjoyed it. How did Hector come across to you?
Uh, Hector, you know, Hector knew the answers to things. Uh, he, you know, he's been the local guy. I think him and Art came across as knowing the community. Uh, Mr. Felix didn't. He'd only lived in the district for a little while. Uh, so Hector has the most, uh, you know, local support, you know, or the establishment, if you will. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, you know, from his position in gangs out of Downey. He's got the police and so forth. But I think it was interesting. I think Hector, uh, threw up a good jab, uh, a good one back, you know, the Ojos Locals thing. You know, there's Mr. Ortiz in the audience, one of the other commissioners that voted against it.
Yeah.
So you can always, you know, for me, you know, one of my rules when I was, uh, an elected official, I was like, don't ask me to vote on something. And tell me I have to vote one way or the other. If I'm voting on it, I'm voting what I think is right or wrong.
Sure.
So somebody else did, and whether it was just on that technicality. But I thought, I thought he did good. I think they both came across.
I agree.
You know, very likable and, and smart.
I agree. I think it's gonna be the most competitive race. It's gonna be between Hector and Art. Um, I think the other district is, you know, we'll talk about it. That one's a little bit more of a clear-cut choice.
Right.
Uh, but, but Hector and Art, it's gonna be interesting. You're, you're spot on. I think you have Hector, who's supported heavily by a lot of Downey people. Uh, he's raising a lot of money where Art is actually in the underdog. He's not raising nearly enough money or as much money. He's not, he doesn't have the endorsements, but he's hustling, he's working hard. And you have two clear, clearly different candidates running for office.
Right, right. Absolutely, absolutely. So let's go to the other side, okay? To the other part of the stage. So you have, uh, Councilman Claudia Fermina. Uh, you have a newcomer, Joaquin Beltran, that ran for Congress, uh, in the June primary. And then you have Juan Martinez. He goes by Juan Joey Martinez. Uh, that's been one of, go ahead. What are your thoughts?
So you know, I, I thought, you know, I, I felt like Joaquin Beltran, I think he has very good intentions. Um, I think he has, um, he seems like a very likable person, but I don't think he has a firm grasp on the local issues. That, that was my, that was my takeaway from, from watching the forum.
They came across and his answers were big. So it's almost like he should be running for Congress or, or US Senator, uh, and so forth. Because some of the things here, many things you said, well, we can't do that here.
Right.
He wants to tax the big corporations and give that money for the poor. That's great. But now you're a Downey city council person, you could be 5-0 to count to, you know, tax Apple and Google and whatever.
It doesn't mean.
It doesn't mean anything. That's what I'm saying. There's no, so I think, I think his, um, he's politically immature.
Right.
You know, but you're right. I think he's a likable gentleman. He's, it's interesting is he's the only one that, he wore a mask the whole time, wouldn't take it off. And that's his choice, obviously. Uh, but he did a couple misleading statements. He said that there's lines out the door in LA County hospitals right now with people with, because COVID. Okay, well, that isn't true today. You know, there may be at some, you know, ERs, but it's not because of COVID. Uh, you've got Claudia Fermina that's in the business on the Kaiser Hospital and it just, it just was a little bit exaggeration. And then one part that he also brought up, he says, I wear a mask because I'm a leader. You know, he's the only person in the room that is wearing a mask, but it's okay. I don't, I don't want to put him down with that. But I think his answer for wearing a mask was a little bit different, you know, so, but you know, yeah.
Uh, Juan Martinez, I think he has a better grasp of, of local issues. You know, I, I think he would. I, I think the problem with him is that he comes across very, uh, very angry and upset. And I think, and that's, that's maybe he is, but I think it's hard to get on, on board with what he's saying. Because, you know, honestly, because of his conduct, I don't, I don't trust him. And so he makes a lot of allegations, but he doesn't, he, I haven't seen any of this evidence to back up what he's saying. He comes, you know, he's, he's a protester. Uh, he's at every city council meeting. He uses obscene language. Uh, he's not somebody that I think, uh, that I would.
Take seriously.
Take seriously.
I, I asked him that question, okay? You know, with your conduct and your foul language at city council meetings and so forth. You think you're a good example to their youth in the city and so forth. And, and his answer was pretty much, well, when there's all these cover-ups and things going on, you have to get angry or whatever. Well, you know, you and I, I've gotten angry. You don't use the F-word to the mayor and all these terrible things when there's kids present. And, but that's part of the regular language. So that's just embarrassing.
Right.
Number two, his claims that there's, there are waters tainted. It's not tainted and we all know that. You know, Coca-Cola buys our water still today, 5% of the city. So it's not tainted.
That's been debunked already.
It's been debunked a hundred times, but he still brought it up there. But he's fighting for the champion of that. And he brought up, you know, Gilbert Levis, our city manager, and he needed to go and he's corrupt and this and then. He's one of the best leaders I've ever had, you know, and one of the most honest guys. So all these things, you take away your credibility. So I think people there saw that. And then when you're outside a council meeting, protesting with a beggar horn, you know, how does that make you a good council person?
I, I think generally people, you, you know, in my experience, people tend to be loud when they lack substance in what they're saying.
Yeah.
Like if you have raw substance and if you, if you have evidence of corruption like you're saying, you don't need to be shouting on the corner. You don't need a bullhorn. You just present it, you know, and, and people will judge it based on what it is.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any substance there. And so he needs a shout.
Well, and then when we talked about, we asked everybody about rent control, because that's one thing Ms. Alvarez brings up. And you know, the answer, I mean, we brought it up. It's like, listen, Downey has rent control. It's 5%. So anything to change it is, you know, you're really willing to change it for 3%, is that gonna make a difference? And, and the majority of people, uh, said that, no, that's not it, that you need to build more affordable housing and so forth. You know, Mr. Felix's thing is that he's gonna get, you know, grants for this. And well, there's magical grants someplace out there that.
I did notice about Juan, one final note on him. I noticed that he was on his phone during the forum. I don't know if it was texting or it looked like he was texting. I don't know. But he, he looked distracted.
Yeah, yeah. So, and how about Claudia Fermina? So.
You know, Claudia, obviously she's an incumbent, been there for four years. So she has a really firm grasp of, of what's happening in the city of Downey. Um, she, she tried, I'll say she did try to keep Gilbert Levis, our old city manager. Um, she's, she's running, I think, on the platform of bringing of stability in Downey, which I think is, is what Downey needs. I don't know if anybody would disagree on that.
She's got a voting record. She's got a track record of honesty, of working, you know, along with everybody and so forth. That should be a very easy one. I mean, this is a really easy one on there. So, you know, we, so we didn't take positions on it before because we were doing the moderation and so forth. So, but I can tell you that I'm heavily supporting, uh, Claudia Fermina in the standpoint. And I think that that's endorsing her. Uh, I mean, our city doesn't need to. The other two, you know, um, could bring questionable results to us. And now we have a proven commodity, in commodity, I shouldn't call a person a commodity, but we have a proven track record of a leader there. So that's a no-brainer to me. I don't know about you.
I know, I, I agree. And you know, I, I feel like Downey's actually lucky that Claudia wants to run for reelection. Because I wouldn't blame her for walking away after four years. You know, she got elected in 2018. Downey's a far different city than it was in 2018. And the nastiness that she has to go through, you know, for wanting, just for wanting to do what's best for her community. I mean, I, I wonder sometimes why she would want to run again. Any normal person, you know? You know, she has a wonderful family. She has a career. Um, she has a lot going for her right now. She doesn't need to do this. I think we're fortunate that she wants to run.
Yeah. Eric, my daughter wanted to run for my old council seat and I really talked her out of it. And, uh, because it's really difficult right now when you have these crazy people at the council meeting calling you names. I mean, for the women, they call the, the worst name you can call them. Uh, and I mean, and Joey Martinez is one of them on there. And then you have the other guys on there. It's just sad. And I couldn't handle somebody doing that to my daughter. I can't handle doing it to any women.
Yeah.
Uh, or men, for that matter and so forth. So, yeah.
It's, you know, that's part of the reason, it's getting tougher to, to get qualified, good qualified people to run for city council. Because why? Is not something that you're gonna get rich doing. And so, yeah, any decent person probably isn't gonna want to put up with all that nonsense. It's not worth it. People ask me all the time, you know, oh, am I sad that I lost when I ran? Cause I ran in 2020 and, and I lost. And I'm not sad. You know, I have, I have a life. I have a personal life. I have a professional life. And life goes on and I don't have to deal with all those headaches.
Yeah, I know. It's, when I go into city hall, there's just city hall smell and, and city hall things. And then with the people leaving, uh, there, you know, you gotta whole change wells. As a matter of fact, let's break into our next topic. You know, you and I just saw our assistant city manager, Aldo Schindler, just became the city manager over in the city of Artesia. Originally, he left to be economic development and assistant city manager in Moreno Valley, but he came back there. So, you know.
Good for him.
You know, yeah.
Good for him, but it's, it's Downey's loss because, you know, Aldo was here. He was our deputy city manager. When Gilbert Levis, um, was forced out, you know, people saw the writing on the wall and Aldo had to leave. And it's, it's too bad. It, it shows you the quality of people that we had at city hall. And these were people who are capable of being city managers in other cities. And now we're seeing that it's happening.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so let's go into the elections, okay? Uh, well, first of all, uh, we've always said we're gonna recap the city council meeting.
Yeah.
So let's do that last week, city council. There's only a couple of real important things to bring up. Uh, I'm tired for a while of talking about the recall.
Yeah.
Uh, it got done. Thank you to all those amazing people that, that worked so hard to do that. Uh, and, but we have a recall date now.
Well, uh, it's January 31st, uh, 2023. Uh, special election, right? Special election only for, only for residents of District 3. And it's a simple election if you want to recall Catherine Alvarez or not.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
There's nobody allowed to run at that point. Uh, so it's not like the gubernatorial race where you had, you know, yes or no. And then if, if it's no, I mean, excuse me, if it's yes, who else? That doesn't happen, which I think it helps. I think it's just, just let's go on her question of her.
Right, right. It's very focused. So if she, if she is recalled, do you know Mario, when did, when is she removed from office? And then when do residents vote for a new person?
Well, the remove from office, it depends on the county when they certify it. So, I mean, if it's a big landslide, hopefully she'll just walk away at midnight. Uh, which I think it probably will be. But, uh, technically the county has to certify it. So they have 30 days to certify. I can't imagine her actually doing anything in that time period, you know, from, uh, being an elected official. Uh, then, but you know what's interesting is they have all these choices of dates. It can't be the Tuesday after a holiday and all this stuff. They could have had it like the 24, move it up even. But, oh, it's a council meeting night. Well, who cares about the council? That's what I was thinking. So who cares? It was a council meeting, right? You're having people voting and the polls close at seven, you know? You as council members, you're not there, you know? So anyways, whatever. But, uh, and then our charter's a little bit different in the city of Downey. Uh, unlike the, uh, the seat for Sean Ashton, uh, that they could appoint somebody to fill that seat, okay? Um, but in this case, under a recall, our charter's clear, they cannot appoint somebody under a recall. They could appoint him if they resign, if, if she had resigned before this. Even if she resigns now, the, the election goes forward, which is kind of sad because it's gonna cost the taxpayers.
Right.
When she first heard that they had enough signatures turned in, she should have resigned then and, and spared the city all this money. But, okay. She blames it on me and Rick Rodriguez because we're landlords in the city. I am not a landlord in the city. She doesn't even have her factual. I don't not own one rental property in the city of Downey. I own them in other cities, but not in the city of Downey. I own my home in the city of Downey and that's it. So she claims that it's all about rent control. It's just, it's, it's ridiculous to think that these people, these great people that were out there trying to get her signature were out there working for a 2% difference in rent from 5% to 3%. Come on, Catherine, it's silly.
It's not true. I think there's a lot of noise out there right now. But the, the bottom line is people were trying, working to get this recall vote.
Yeah.
Because they didn't know that she had a criminal record in 2020. That's, that's it.
So, so I had on, on Friday, I'm out there in the corner, uh, in downtown Downey. And, uh, last week, the Downey Beat had posted a picture of her with the marijuana lobbyists, Jean Gonzalez and Tony Thomas. Uh, Jean Gonzalez is a local resident. He's actually a nice gentleman. Uh, owns, uh, several marijuana dispensaries in Growth. And it was a picture of them at, um, at the Del Rey, a nice place in Pico Rivera. And it's just, and the reason for it, it wasn't because it was illegal, although she needs to turn in her, that she received a free lunch at the Del Rey from them.
If she did, we don't know if she did.
Um, right. We should find out whether she paid for herself, which, you know, we don't, we don't know. But, but yeah, most likely. But, and I asked that to Mr. Gonzalez and he, he said they were reached out to by her. Um, anyways, which I, I don't have care one way or the other. It seems legal. My only point was the hypocrisy of her saying she couldn't attend the International Food Festival a couple of weeks ago or last month in downtown Downey because she didn't have any money. Well, the International Food Festival is free. And you as an elected official, you get a stipend of, you know, 700 and some odd dollars a month. So maybe you should have saved some of that money to walk around or just come, okay? So the fact that she's eating Del Rey with marijuana lobbyists, uh, you know, what does that mean for the city of Downey? Are you looking to put marijuana in or not? It was just suspicious.
Okay, so assuming she's recalled on January 31st, when is the next election for her replacement?
There will be an open seat until next November.
November 2023.
November 2023. It will not be, uh, they will not be able to appoint somebody on there. So then everybody can run and so forth. And people have asked me who and when. I'm like, no, no. First the recall, once the recall, there'll be plenty of time to talk about it. I'm sure there'll be plenty of time of people that want to run for that seat. No matter who we get, it'll be a lot better than what she is.
She is probably gonna run. She may run for.
I don't, I don't think she can. If she was, I don't think she can if she was, uh, recalled. There was some discussion of that, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I don't think it, she can on there. So we'll see. Okay. That'll be interesting. Yes.
Okay. It'll be nice enough to talk about the recall for a little bit.
Let's, let's just go on.
We, we have a date in January and then we'll, we'll, you know.
So we'll, we'll talk to you in the middle of January about the recall. So you get a couple of months off from us talking about, uh, uh, this criminal councilwoman. Anyway, except we are gonna have to talk about it with the mayor's transition in December. That's gonna be.
Because she's mayor pro temp.
Yeah. I'm hoping that, that the other council folks on there realize that. And including Mario Trujillo and, and Claudia Fermina and even Blanca Pacheco and then whoever comes in there.
I don't know. Blanca Pacheco voted to make her mayor pro temp. So I mean, I don't know.
Well, and you're nice editorial about her. You didn't even mention that. You, it was nice and all the things were true.
Yeah.
But you were, you were very pro-herd, but you didn't mention that. I'm reading it like, Eric, I think that's one bad fault.
That's not enough of a reason for me not to vote for, vote for her for state assembly.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I, I, and I wouldn't on there. I was disappointed that, why? Why would you do that? And I know we need a mayor pro temp. So that was my.
It didn't make any kind of sense. It goes back to what you said earlier, I think, is don't ask me to vote for something if I can't really vote for what I think is right. That doesn't make sense. Nothing's automatic.
Anyways, anyways, okay. So speaking of elections, uh, thank you for publishing my op, uh, op-ed regarding the propositions. We've gotten some comments already. Some people disagree with me. Every year they do, but this year, less disagreement. It seems the big consensus among most people, at least the polling, that most of them are gonna go down. Except like Prop 1 was probably gonna win. Uh, the arts in the school, Prop 28, uh, that's close on there. I think what's people are realizing and that could take money away from it. I mean, everybody wants music and arts from the schools, but it's taking away earmark. It's like a billion dollars from regular stuff on there. So, um, but all the other ones seem to be, uh, going down in defeat, if you will.
That's what the polling shows.
Yeah, yeah. It was interesting. I get, I get all these in the mail, right? So you get all these, all these beautiful long things and, you know, here's, no on Prop 27, here's.
Those are the mailers that you get.
The mailers. Yes, I'm 27. Uh, here's one from the, one political party. This is Cerritos College that wants to suspend $450 million. So there's a lot, there's a lot of money. Consultants that make money on this and everything else on there, you know, we all know that. This is an interesting one from the city of Downey. It's not, there's nothing wrong with it, okay? And it's in Spanish and in English, okay? And it just says, vote Downey, election day. And it tells you where to go and all these other things and it's fine. But I looked at it very suspect. Because it doesn't tell me what to vote on. It doesn't push or anything like that. I get it. But why are we spending money on this, on this permit? And, and my gut is, the city of Downey has, uh, a tax, uh, hotel transit.
Sure.
Uh, on the ballot to go out. So I'm thinking that, okay, this is a subtle way.
Mayor want turnout.
Yeah, this is a subtle way of doing it on there, right? And it does on there. So, um, I'll mention it really fast. It's, it's a, it's an increase from nine to 12%. And, and it doesn't, Downey residents don't get hurt per se. This is what goes on your hotel, uh, that you pay per room. So this is my hotel bill from, uh, Washington DC last week, right? So the night, it's, the Washington DC hotels are ridiculous, right? It's $3.49 a night. It's, it's just crazy. But there's an occupancy sales tax of 14.95. So that was $52.18 per night just for that. So when I looked at this 14.95, of course, um, Washington has a lot more issues than, that they need their tax of this DC and stuff. But the city of Downey would be, this is going to, I think, 11 or 12%. So it's even lower than that. Um, and then we have the two big hotels here. You have the new, uh, Marriott and you have of course the Embassy Suites. But you and I were talking about a little bit something.
Yeah, so, so I, I disagree when you say that it doesn't affect Downey residents.
Right.
Because you, you know, obviously we have, you know, we have some people who come into Downey. We're not a big tourist town. But we do have people who come to first sports tournaments or cheerleading competitions or whatever. And they tend to stay at the embassy. And they tend to stay at the Embassy Suites and now the Springfield, Springfield. I get it. But I'm more concerned about the people affected who are living at Rick's Motel at the, the Downey Inn. The small motels that, that are living there. Those aren't tourists. Those aren't business people. Those are families who are living there because they're very close to homelessness.
Right.
Because they're, they're in, uh, they're living in transitional spaces.
Correct.
And they're people who are maybe not living in their cars and they're, they're renting rooms for, for the week or for the month. Those are the people who are gonna be paying this increase in tax. And it's gonna be an extra, what, twenty dollars a night or whatever.
Yeah.
If they're living in a motel, they can't afford that. These are the people, and these are Downey residents. These are people with kids going to Downey schools.
Right.
I wish that there was, uh, a room limit or something. I wish this new tax applied, or the increase in tax applied to more of the major hotels.
Right.
Where they're gonna get the tourists or the people, the, the business people. More of the, the people who can afford it more. That's my concern. That's.
And, uh, one thing we should do, Eric, is if it does pass, let you and I take a look at that and, and go ask them, the council members. Can you put some of that money aside in your next budget for those people? Could somebody apply to those uh, to get small grants on there from that because of that increase?
Some housing vouchers, right?
Yeah, yeah.
With, I, I'm on, I'm on the board of some nonprofits and it, yeah, we, we don't see the homelessness that, that's here in Downey. And it doesn't always mean just living in a tent on a sidewalk. It means living, a family living in the hotel room.
Yeah, we have, uh, I remember working with TLC. I used to be on the board. I know you're on the board now. And, you know, one of the things that they had looked at was homelessness. You know, we consider homelessness like the gentleman outside living there on the street. But homelessness is having two or three families in a garage.
Yeah.
You know, and that happens a lot. We have a whole child here that helps that. But our school district tries to do a really good job of helping with that. And through TLC is an amazing place.
Yeah.
But we have, we have more homeless kids than I thought at that time and it's kinda, kinda crazy. So anyways, you're right. This makes our, this makes our charge if it passes.
Yeah.
Let's have the, let's bring it up to the city. Make sure that they're looking at that.
Yeah, definitely.
So, so another one on there that, uh, your paper, Mr. Pierce on there have a nice half-page ad. So I know they're a little expensive, uh, about voting yes on K. You take another position here on the school district on voting uh, yes on K. Uh, K is a measure of five hundred million dollar bond for schools. Would you like to address that?
Well, I, I know we, we disagree on, on, on our support. I support measure K. I know you don't. And that, that's, that's great. You know, we just want people to be educated and make, make up your own mind. But you had a little issue with the, I guess, transparency.
I, I do. I do. This is a, a full-page ad.
Half-page.
Actually, half-page ad. It's just, it's full when it's full. Okay? Um, you know, vote yes on K. Schools built, were built a long time ago. Save our neighbor's school. Modernization for it. Every penny here stays in Downey. And, and I gotta qualify this because I have a lot of friends at Downey Unified. Um, Downey Unified has been great stewards of our money. Uh, we have two other bonds already that we're paying for as homeowners, which is part of my concern on there. Uh, and they've done a really good job. I mean, look at our high schools, our middle schools. Uh, they look beautiful. Yes, it helps my property value. Uh, yes, I'm proud. Downey Unified are good people, good stewards of our money. I have a problem with the timing of this. Along with the Cerritos College, you got four hundred and fifty million dollars being asked. Uh, this is Cerritos College. Four hundred and fifty million and this is five hundred million. And we went over how much it would cost me, but it's, it's, it's not only me, it's other people. We have a big senior population here. But having said that, okay, I just thought the timing of it, uh, in, on there. Or let's finish the one bond before we add a third on. We're good. But here's the thing that get, gets me. Save modern schools on there. Okay, this ad is paid for by Yes On K for Downey Kids twenty twenty-two. Who the heck is that? I went on their website. Okay, it doesn't say that, but I can tell you that I almost could bet on this. Okay? It's gonna be the architects that are gonna build it and so forth. And school districts are building school property. That's why we couldn't build the YMCA because it's an elevated cost. It's gotta be extra, extra special, rightfully so. So the architects, the builders, uh, whoever is getting money down the road are the ones that are paying for this. They had done it.
They have the financial interest.
Of course, because the school district can't, you know, here's a million dollars to get, you know. They can't do that. Uh, I don't think they're asking a lot of private donors to do this. So that's the part that's a little, I always think that you're shoving this down our throat. Tell us the truth then.
Well, that's what happened with, you know, with, uh, with the city of Downey, with measure S, with the city of Downey. That was really bankrolled by by construction firms and architects and that.
I'll tell you, so I, I was chairman, excuse me, uh, vice chair. Dave Goffin was on there. So the original committee, which included Dorothy Pemberton.
Talking about the oversight committee.
The Oversight Committee for Measure S, right? So we go to our first meeting and John Osquey is, is showing us, he was the assistant city manager that just was kind of forced to retire recently. Uh, so he's showing us these pictures of, you know, what's gonna be built with it. And down below it says, you know, so-and-so architect firm, so-and-so builder and so forth. So I asked the question. I go, by the way, that so-and-so builder there, that they contribute to the measure S, uh, you know, election and funding for it. And then he gets a grin on his face. He goes, I don't know, Mario. You might have to look that up yourself. I go, so you're telling me all these ones on the, you don't know if they donated to that? And he wouldn't answer me, but I'll tell you, Neil Gandhi, the city treasurer, uh, they're honest man. I trust completely with our finances. Right away, he goes, yes, Mario, they did. So, and everybody else knew that on there. So I knew what the answer is gonna be, but the fact that John Osquey wouldn't answer it truthfully and so forth. So again, it's just, it's, just be transparent. This here, just be transparent. So let everybody know that these fancy ads and the mailers that we get at home and all the little lawn signs are being paid by somebody that's gonna make money. Yes, it's a great idea.
But, sure, but I, I do wanna add though, I, I see a lot of the volunteers though. There's a ton of volunteers and those are Downey people. Those are Downey educated.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
So I don't wanna make it seem like it's just being fun, not funded, but pushed down by.
The timing, the timing is they're, they have some paid walkers, uh, but you're right. The timing.
And volunteer wise.
And, and volunteer wise. I'm saying the timing is done by the volunteers and stuff. So, and again, so that's just my problem on there. This costs a lot of money. Okay? This is done with self-service in mind. Okay? This ad here.
The ad.
The ad, the, the lawn sign, the marketing, the, the put it on the ballot. All those things on there are other. So be honest with it. Ad paid, who's yes on K? I put it on their website and they commented on, on some of the social media. And, oh, can you tell me who yes on K, Downey Kids twenty twenty-two, that, ask if you can see it on there? And they kept answering other people. They wouldn't answer me.
Well, you know, it's funny, if you, if you watch the TV commercials, you know, it, it, it says the, the same thing, you know, supported by whatever. But the ad in there with heavy funding by so-and-so, whatever business.
Right.
Or PAC or whatever. TV advertising has it.
And it, well, even other stuff has it. All these other measure things, they all have it here. See? Ad paid for by yes, I'm, I'm thinking on there, featured other, uh, Pacheco, uh, Pachanga, uh, Group of Indians, uh, funding details and blah, blah, blah. So this has it. All these other ones have it. Okay? So it's like, come on dude. And I mean, maybe that's the bare minimum legal, but you're hiding and that's.
But we don't need, I mean, we don't. We, we don't.
So, and so, so, um, going back, we gotta finish the cup, two things that happened in the city council, just cause we're for information.
Right.
Uh, they're doing a parking preferential zone, buffer zone over on, uh, uh, Corrin between uh, Butler and Stewart and Gray. It's over there by Stonewood Mall. There's a parking problem.
Yeah.
So they're gonna try this, uh, you know, preferential, uh, parking thing. So that was interesting.
It is. Can I, I'll give you my opinion.
Absolutely.
More generally speaking.
Yeah. You used to live in that area.
I, I, I did. And I'm not a fan of preferential parking districts. So with, if it, basically you need a permit to park on the street.
Right.
I used to live on Moller right by Stonewood.
Yeah.
And it was, it was, uh, a, a tiny one-bedroom, uh, one-bathroom apartment. It wa- it was my wife and I. It had one parking space. It was built in the fifties. And obviously we have two cars. We each have a car. And so it only came with one parking space. So one of us had to park on the street. We had no choice. And so when the city passed, they passed a, uh, uh, they created a parking district on Shelleyfield. And so what happened is I had to park on the next street. It just moves the problem over. Nobody's parking on the street because you want to. It's not because we have ten cars. It's we have to park somewhere.
Right.
And there, there's, there's, there's no easy solution. But in my opinion, when you just create a parking district, you're just moving the you're not solving a problem. You're just moving it to somebody else. Because now if you live on the next street over, you're gonna be upset with all these people parking in front of your cars, in front of your house.
I have a little bit of a solution would be to work out, you know, that's where you get public-private partnerships. That one corner there, that side of Stonewood Mall, of course, is not used after, you know, seven o'clock at night and so forth. They, I would suggest they go to them and I, and I, I know we tried once when I was in the county. Go to them and see if that could be a worked out, that people can park there, you know, get, get, take off their liability. They're worried about liability. Somebody hurts themselves there on their property. You know, why take on the extra liability and kind of stuff like that? So that might be something to, because it, there, you're getting more parking spots. But, but you're absolutely right. I think it's gonna be, but let's wait and see.
Yeah.
But they passed it and I'm glad they, they tried.
We'll see, we'll see the results.
Something else that they did, they pa- adopted the housing update with a negative declaration for the city of Downey. You have to build so much housing in the city. Okay? And we have a plan, but we don't. It's like, I don't know. I wanna say three, four thousand homes. We're a landlocked city. Um, so when they passed that, it, it bothered me. Cause just last week, there's a developer that's been trying to build forty-four, uh, units condos over by the riverbed off of Foster Road. And then they're building some other stuff on Woodruff, uh, thirty-eight units. So here's seventy, eighty-two units that they've been for three years trying to build.
Right.
And they're still landlocked. And every time they do something, so they called me out of frustration. You know, I forwarded to the city manager and, and he was open to listening to it. But you gotta, if, you gotta be, you gotta help as a, as a city. You gotta help on there. So please help these people build housing then if that's what we need. Because it was, it was, the things they were telling me, the things they showed me.
Right.
It's like, are you kidding? You're just trying to put obstacles in front of them.
And I feel like that's one reason that we're getting so many more mandates by the state of California. Is when you get cities that are so resistant to building homes, is, you know, we have legislators who think, well, you're not doing your part. We're gonna need to force you to, to do your part. And that's part of the problem.
I get it. I get it. Okay, two more quick things. We're covering the whole city council meeting.
We are.
Okay? We're, we're here as a public service. Uh, the two of our residents will have fun with it. Uh, the healthcare, the twenty-five dollars an hour, uh, uh, for healthcare workers in the city of Downey. Originally, it was a petition to put it on, uh, to, to make it, to do it. The city council voted to do it. Then the, uh, opponents went out there, got signatures. It's gotta go on the ballot. So November twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. Um.
Or twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
That's, um, uh, what Alex Domigas reported, um, in, in the paper, uh, twenty twenty-four. So it's, it's a ways away.
Yeah.
But we know once we get closer, that's gonna be a really heated, that's gonna be a big election, November twenty twenty-three.
Well, the presidential election.
Presidential and, and city councilor, we'd have this. I mean, we're thinking way down the road. I'm already, I'm tired just thinking about it.
Take a breath now for the next thirty days, folks, because then it's gonna be. You know, my favorite part of elections?
Yeah.
Is, you know, four in the morning, my iPad going through. But you know, these days now, the problem is on election night, you don't know who really won.
Right.
On, on some of the close races. It takes a couple of weeks down the road. But it's still, for me, I have so many friends in, in politics. Uh, you know, congress folks and, and throughout the, the state and, and the country on there, that it's fun for me to do as a political person.
Right.
Uh, but yeah, and there's a lot of people that are, you know, I don't remember my elections, uh, you know, and I've been on the ballot now four times. Uh, you're, you're, you're holding your breath, you know, to see and stuff.
Yeah, I've, I've mentioned to you, I don't enjoy politics. It's, I think some people, you know, use politics as entertainment, as a sport. And to me, I, I know, like, it's, I'm involved because it's so important to us and we need to be involved, but I don't, I don't enjoy it.
Uh, see, I do. You get to make change when you have a seat at the table. And you get to get a seat at the table, you gotta be involved. I don't know. I, I love it.
There's so much dishonesty.
Oh, no, I get it. Well, look what happened in LA city council. We know these people were being thuggish for a long time. It just finally, until you hear it on the, you know, you know, one thing that got me, we weren't even planning on doing this, talking about it. But Kevin DeLeón, right? He's sitting there sticking up for Tony Mendoza. Tony Mendoza had to resign in disgrace, was our senator here. Okay? Which he actually changed his name. He goes by Antonio now. Had to resign in disgrace. He was Kevin DeLeón's roommate.
Yeah.
And Kevin DeLeón said all the right things when he was in Sacramento. But on the video and on the tape, he's now saying, oh, you know, look how they treated Tony.
Yeah.
You know, that wasn't illegal. That was just harassment. You know, just harassment. So I'm glad that the Times called the person that he harassed and saying, well, I was being, one of the ones that was being harassed.
Yeah.
So you sleazebucket Kevin. You're now sticking up for the sleazebucket Tony Mendoza.
Yeah.
Really dude? You know, that resigned in disgrace and then couldn't win his own seat back. Ah, so. So Eric, we've gone off topic there. We've covered a lot of things. We hope that everybody gets a chance to hear what, about our city council. A lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
Um, you know, elections, we're excited. Whatever they do, you know, please vote for, you know, uh, vote for Claudia.
Please vote.
Yeah, please vote. But I don't have any problem going on the record, and I think that you'll, you'll vouch for me on this, that we as Talking Downey can endorse Claudia Fermina. Uh, I don't know how you feel about it, but I, I certainly am. Yeah. So we're endorsing Claudia Fermina at Talking Downe, especially now that the, that with the moderation part was over.
Yeah.
Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Beltran asked me that afterwards. And he says, he goes, you know, when I first saw you guys with the moderators, I thought that you were supporting, um, Claudia. And I said to him, do you think we were fair? He goes, oh, yeah. He goes, were our questions fair to you? Oh, yeah. Did we handle it professionally? Would you have known when, when he goes, no, you guys did good on that. So that was the only.
I mean, you know, my integrity means everything to me. So, so I, I just want people to be educated on the issues and vote for the candidate that you think is best. And I'll, you know, I've been more vocal in, in, in uh, letting people know my opinions on who I think would be best or what would be best for, for Downey. Um, but I just want people to make their, their honest, uh, decision. Just don't vote for anybody for any common reason. Uh, know who you're voting for.
Right. So officially, I think we're voting for Claudia Fermina. Uh, me personally, I'm gonna be voting. Now I'm in, in that district. And I have a lawn sign now on my front yard. I'm gonna be voting for Hector Sosa.
Yeah.
Uh, just because I know him. I'm not putting down Mr., uh, Mr. Montoya. And, uh, uh, Mr. Felix, uh, you know, you, you have to do something in the city, uh, before you, you know, you get elected on there. He's only been here a few months.
Yeah.
Uh, but anyway.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, um, we'll be back in a couple of weeks, uh, or next week. Uh.
Who knows? We'll be back soon.
We'll be back.
We do wanna thank Financial Partners Credit Union, our sponsor for making, uh, this possible. Uh, you know, we have to purchase the, the mics. We have, um, we have a producer, uh, in, in the back. We have a camera. And so, so thank you Financial Partners for making this happen.
Making this happen. And they're part of the community to make sure the community is informed.
Yeah.
So, uh, anyway, so we hope you enjoyed this one, this episode of Talking Downey with Mario.
And Eric.